Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 7th, 2022, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order, and we do still have a quorum tonight. Our first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the November 16th, 2022, and November 30th, 2022, Planning Commission meetings. I'll have a chance to review those ahead of time if anybody had any changes or corrections, and if not, we'll be ready for a motion.
So our non- I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, old business. We have two items under old business tonight. The first item is a zoning application for approximately 1.5 acres located at 915 Haynes Drive to be rezoned from RS 15 to PRD. Blue Sky Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. The first item of old business you're being asked to consider, be considered tonight, is for a project that's titled Beaumont. It's 1.5 acres that's located along the south side of Haynes Drive. The Beaumont rezone application was deferred at the request of City Council during the October 20th Planning Commission meeting a couple months ago. The City Council requested the applicants decrease the number of units to be more compatible with existing neighborhood. The applicant's revisions to that PRD are included with the agenda materials, and the representative will present the changes to you this evening. Overall, the PRD reduces the number of units from eight single-family detached units with a horizontal property regime form of ownership to four single-family detached dwellings on individual lots of record. Staff shared with the applicants that the plan revisions require exceptions to development regulations due to the narrowness of the lots, and that's why they are requesting a planned development for the four lots, because they don't meet the RS 15 minimum book standards. Additionally, staff advised the developer that they would be responsible for dedicating any necessary right-of-way according to the major transportation plan improvements and not transfer that obligation to future property owners. During the public hearing at Planning Commission, you may recall there was conversations about the restrictions on the ability to sell these units as rental properties the first few years. However, I didn't see that in this program book. This item is going to City Council tomorrow evening for them to consider it again on first reading, not for another public hearing. But we brought it back to Planning Commission so that we can share the information with you that's being presented and get feedback from you. It's been determined that another public hearing before Planning Commission is not required. However, we would like your consideration on the matter. The applicant would like to come present those changes to you at this time if you have no questions from staff.
Any questions from staff before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Good evening, Mr. Roundtree.
Good evening, Chairman Jones. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Let me go ahead and pop this up for everybody to see. I'm Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering, representing Mr. Kelly Wilson and Brian Burns on this project, as well as Matt Wilson. So this is Beaumont, as it's now described and called, and this has been through quite a few generations. Most of you are probably familiar with the previous concept. We had eight units on this lot. Previously, we ran into a lot of situations with fire truck templates and moving through fire protection, safety. We took this project to City Council, and as Margaret had mentioned, it was deferred. So in the process of deferring, the City Council, Mr. Wright was there. They asked us to move down to six units as a result of concerns over the frontage and the relationship to the kind of the context of how Haynes Drive lives and how it kind of reads and kind of the pattern. And after discussion after City Council, Mr. Burns and Mr. Wilson decided that really four would probably be the most appropriate. It would work well. We could get the homes that we want onsite. And so with that, I'm just going to walk you through the site plan and reflect the changes that were made. So this has been one of those where, let me see, I won't go through the whole PowerPoint because it's a little bit monotonous. Let's see. It's not toggling very Okay, so here's the revised site plan. Let me go one back. Okay, so as was mentioned, and Margaret had mentioned as well, Haynes Haven, our Haynes Drive, has some future wideaway concerns. It's, you know, it's proposed to be a three-lane divided road going through, and so we went through and made center generations with a setback. So this particular project's going to have a 38-foot front setback, and that's going to allow for a potential bike lane as well as the road expansion. So with that, we set the homes 48 feet back to make sure there was no conflict with any future development of Haynes Drive. The four homes are represented. As you can see, they're all a little bit different. They're narrower on the front, deeper, as far as deeper overall. They have detached garages in the back. There's a three-car detached garages in the rear, and the lots are 331 feet, 21 feet. They're very deep. So these are large lots, have plenty of square footage, except for the fact that there's a narrowness to it. That's where the exception's coming in as far as on the site setbacks, as far as a concern. So with that in mind, I'll walk you through the various home styles. Similar in character, Mr. Burns has done something similar to these homes on North Maple, but they have kind of a craftsman character. I think they'll be very marketable. That particular area of the neighborhood has quite a variety. A lot of the homes are ranch-style homes. A lot of them are brick. A lot of them have siding. Some are newer, some are older. So these homes have a little bit more of a timeless nature to them, so we feel confident that it'll fit well within the pattern of the neighborhood. So that's, that is house number one. House number two, again, similar in character, a two-story home, this one would be. And then lot three, house three. All the houses have front porches. That's a common theme. We wanted to have back porches. We reduced the size of the back porch. Most of them had attached garages originally from the, from the plan. We modified that to make them detached and provide a back porch rather than just having the garage in the back. And then this is house number four. This is a one-story, one of the larger, larger footprint homes on the property. This is closest to the adjacent neighbor. When we had our neighborhood meeting, this neighbor showed up. Wasn't exactly against the project, but it is pretty close proximity to this house. So we felt like a one-story there would be a nice transition rather than go two stories. So that was a move we decided to make. And then overall, just to walk you through, we justified all the driveways to the right-hand side again to make sure the closest proximity to that adjacent neighbor, there'd be a driveway and then the house. We are having a two-foot green space between the driveway and, as far as the property line in the driveway. Then we have a minimum of three to four feet between the driveway and the house. That'll be landscaped. And then deep driveways, so we have two guest parking at the end of the driveways to make sure that anyone comes to the property, then going back and basically get out of the driveway as well. So with that in mind, that's the change. As you mentioned before, as we mentioned before, there are eight homes on the same property with a circle drive with one access point, and after a lot of deliberations with the planning staff and with Brian and Howard, four was determined. The City Council's supporting this. We feel like they're, they were the one to encourage us to go in this direction. Again, Mr. Wright, we were at six before, so we feel like with four, it's more than a compromise. We feel like we've hopefully met the expectations of not only planning staff, but Planning Commission and tomorrow night's City Council.
Can I ask a couple of questions before you dive in? So on this, the page we're looking at right here shows the foundation landscaping. And is this, this says formal space and conceptual landscape plan, and all it's showing is the shrubbery on the front of the house and nothing down any of the sides, and one shade tree in each yard, which is very different from the pictures we're looking at of the renderings that you're giving us. So which, which one is the right option on the landscaping?
We have every intention. That's why we provided the three to four feet swatch along the side of house, Chairman Jones, that that'll all be lushly landscaped, and there'll be probably multiple layers on the front as well. He, he just didn't want to, it's just basically a builder's package right now, but he knows it's going to be quite a big accentuated once we get into the actual landscape design.
Okay, and staff, is this landscape plan, if it looks like this in the book, and then the pictures are different, are we, are we good with what they're saying here that that?
Our, our landscape ordinance doesn't address landscaping for single-family detached homes. So I think what they're trying to do is just kind of show more or less somewhat of a generic front streetscape without getting into too much detail about what they're proposing to do on the sides and in the rear. But certainly, if there are any concerns that you have about needing more specificity on how the sides would look from a landscape standpoint, now would be the time to, to ask them to include that.
Yeah, I, I don't need to know what bush or sea exactly, but if, if the picture is a, is a good idea of what you really plan to do versus the little schematic in here, then I, I think it looks great. But I just want to make sure we're not seeing a picture and then the, this conceptual landscape plan is what we're going to get.
I think, I think they have, they have the sides from, you know, from the house to the driveway, from the house to the side lot lines. There's not a whole lot of room. So I think probably the best that we could do, if you wanted to, to put measures in place to get some kind of greenery along the sides, is to include language in there that, that shrubbery will be, will be planted along the sides of the houses as, as possible or, or as determined during the building permit application process, because there's just, there's not a whole lot of room to work with right there. Mr. Burns, I think, has something to say to address this.
Yeah, these, these houses are going to be quite a bit more expensive than the original homes we brought up, just because of the, the density now. We were planning on landscaping between the driveway and the house all the way back to the garage, and in the back's will be more of a, a green courtyard with a, where you can go to the garage. The side between the other side, we probably won't landscape. We'll landscape the front part and then take it around a little bit, but we won't landscape. Those are long houses. Try to landscape all the way down.
Right. I, I'm, that seems very reasonable. Yes.
They are committing to putting the HVAC units at the rear of the homes, just simply due to the, due to the lack of room on the sides of the homes.
And on the exterior, so house one and house four, something like between the, joining your neighbors, if anything?
I'm not sure. Are you talking about the concept of the houses or the site plan?
I just wondered, did they, were the neighbors asking for anything else once you?
They were just asking us to build nice homes, you know, that don't lower their values down.
And the, taken away, was there like a breezeway or something going from the house to the garage before that you took away?
No, I don't like the breezeways. In my opinion, they're useless and they mess your courtyard up. So for a sales reason, I don't ever build breezeways. Just something we don't like doing. And the courtyard is meant to be more of like a little entertaining area.
Yeah.
The, the plans you're looking at, those were internet pictures of houses and other people, but other places.
Okay.
But we're going to highly landscape these. These are going to be 600,000-plus homes, so they'll be, they'll be very landscaped. I just don't know that I can give you a plan.
No.
That's who I got, so. But I ain't going to show you. They won't be anything you guys will be embarrassed about.
We weren't going to just see what, what we saw on the plan book and the landscape plan.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm good. I want to say I really appreciate all the work y'all done. It's a lot, in my opinion, it's a lot better plan than one that came through before, and you seem to have answered every single concern that the council had. Less dense, big backyards to entertain, independent driveways. I, I really like the new, the new plan. It's great. And with that, if there's no other questions.
What other comments? Anybody?
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much for working with everybody on that. Appreciate All right, our next item of business is a zoning application for approximately 22 acres located at 1925 and 1927 Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS 15 to PUD for 5.4 acres and to amend the Adams Place PUD on 16.6 acres. And Adams Place LLC is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our last item of old business is an application to amend an existing PUD and to rezone parts of that property that are currently zoned for single-family purposes, RS 15, to PUD as well. The application was heard by the Planning Commission and deferred recently due to some additional information that was requested regarding the application. The, as you know, we published the agenda on Friday. Didn't have this on, but the, the Adams Place representatives asked to be placed on today's agenda for you to consider the changes that they're making to the project, which they'll present to you. Before they submitted the changes to us that they'd like to make, they did hold another neighborhood meeting, and it was at the airport, and presented some of the ideas that they had for amendments, and it was a well-attended meeting. As you might have known, had quite a bit of the Haynes Haven residents present. And so the book has been emailed to you today, and then the agenda online says amended, and that's because it was amended to include this program book that was updated today for the Adams Place development. The number of units is not changing with the plan that they're submitting to you. The, the primary difference is the architecture of the units oriented toward Haynes Haven Lane looks a little bit different. They've changed orientation so that faces the street, Haynes Haven Lane. They still have that smaller two-foot berm and landscaping, but have changed those units. One of the comments that staff offered was to actually switch some of the buildings, so the shorter buildings were on the property boundary closest to a single-family house, just to transition into those lower houses. And they said they would consider it, although the plan does not show that in the updates. We also had some questions about the existing planned development that we have, the number of units that are allowed, and overall, the, the PUD from 1994 allows 364 units. Now that's got a caveat, because only 180 of those are independent living. The others are nursing homes or assisted care living facilities, which are licensed by the state differently. What's being proposed tonight, of course, is some more independent living, and I think the goal is to have a variety of people over the age 55 living in this community, and so this will present them with that opportunity. So the plan that's currently, that was approved by Planning Commission in 1994, allows 180 independent living units, 100 nursing beds, and 84 assisted living units. And those are all central to the site, and that original PUD didn't have any development in RS 15 part of the property. So this plan, of course, does propose having some of those. We've called them single-family attached dwellings on the, on the RS 15 property. There's also three more traditional multifamily-style buildings that are proposed. There were also some questions about the gate. There's been a restriction that that gate be accessed only by residents. It has not been maintained. That restriction hasn't, you know, it's been kind of anybody who wants to come in or leave can. And so staff suggested that that be removed as a zoning restriction based on the fact that it's proven that it's fairly difficult for the property owner to manage. Maybe, maybe there's staff turnover and people don't know that that's a zoning restriction, and I don't know if technology is kind of an answer. But, and we also discovered that the residents do use that as an opportunity to approach a signal so they can turn left at a signalized intersection. The applicants have requested, no, they don't want to open, to allow that to be used by the Haynes Haven residents. They want to keep that restriction, that zoning restriction on the property, and they're committing to finding a way to implementing it back and managing it, although it has proven to be difficult in the past. And so those are a couple of comments that we shared regarding the plan. It's a rather quick turnaround. They'd like to take this to planning, or to City Council, and before they do that, of course, they need your deliberation and advice and a recommendation for City Council. The applicants have a presentation. They'd like to go through the details of the changes with you, but before that, do you have any questions from me?
I do. So, and, so when we say that the original plan had 180 independent living units approved, is that how that was defined?
It was.
Okay.
It was defined.
And so could we say that 180 independent living spaces equates to what they are trying to accomplish here? Meaning, we're calling them apartment units, but are they, are those terms synonymous?
So we call them multifamily residential because that's a use in the chart that accurately describes it, but independent living is just that. So they are equivalent. Independent living and multifamily are equivalent because they're not providing that care that you may need.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And how many independent living are there currently?
So I looked at their website, and they may be able to give you better information, but I have 89 apartment residential units, which I would interpret as independent. And then the other, they have 23 memory care and 90-bed health care, nursing rehab. So from their website, I would say they have 89 today. I think it, overall numbers, the 1994 plan had 364, and I think as they have today, it's 202, so they have room to add units. But, you know, there's some nuances in that memory care versus nursing home versus independent living, and the nuances of pushing the development interior to the side or, or letting it expand within the boundaries of the property. We talked a little bit about, you know, in 1994, Adams Place was an unknown. Today, it's not an unknown. We, we know generally how the property is maintained and upkept. The landscaping is integral to the development, and it's something that people who live there and people who live nearby appreciate. And so we'd asked the team as well to really look at that. The magnolia trees, I think, are a source of pride for their neighbors and the people who live there. And so hopefully they'll explain to you their plan for that and for looking at ways to not just take out this, you know, 30-year-old landscaping, but, but keep it as a part of the design.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman Jones, Commissioners, my name's Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to get before you to discuss Adams Place. As Margaret had mentioned, this has gone through quite a few revisions as well, so we'll kind of walk you through the major high points of those revisions. I'm also here with Keaton Pettit, who is the architect, so if you have specific architecture questions, Keaton will be available to answer those. And Mr. Andy Clark is here from the Adams Place team, and he can help you with kind of the purposes behind why we're heading in this direction. I would like to say that, you know, from my knowledge, it's been an interesting experience because we all know Adams Place is highly respected in the community, and the zoning case has been really an interesting one because there's been a lot of, I think because it's such an institution, there's been a lot of interesting components to it, that there's been people concerned about respecting the integrity of Adams Place, making sure it's not compromised. I can tell you, from a team standpoint, we've done everything we could do to make sure that the character and the quality of Adams Place would not be compromised in this process. That's always been a part of our, our mission, in a sense. So with that in mind, hopefully you'll see that as we navigate through the plan, but I do think it's important to note that the amount of concern over the residents, the amount of concern over the character and the quality of Adams Place has been a major focus for this project. But, but we would be naive to say that there hasn't been a lot of resistance from the, from the internal folks, you know, as far as, this is a change, and, and we've come to grips with that. We've done our best, and I know that the internal team is trying to make sure anything we can do to help soften that burden of new construction and just a life change, that is well within the realm of what the team internally is thinking through. So we just want to acknowledge that that, that's a real fact that the team's working through, and they're doing that internally. And then on a global standpoint, Haynes Haven will be coming out tomorrow night to be against this project, and really, their primary concern is traffic. It's, and it's, that neighborhood, I've gone through three zonings there. It's always traffic. It's always drainage.
I, I just want to correct something. This is not on tomorrow night's City Council agenda.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. When we go to City Council, thank you, Matthew, when we go to City Council, we're, we're anticipating some resistance from the Haynes Haven neighborhood. They showed up at our neighborhood meeting, had a lot of energy, and so as Margaret had mentioned, the point of contention is that access point, you know, can it stay open? We're working through that. I think they're trying to figure out going to be a traffic light at the end of Haynes Haven Lane, so there's a lot of dynamics related to traffic. And, and they do feel like some of the development along the corridor with the Walmart, now I think there's a, a Whataburger, I guess, coming in. So they brought up a lot of things that they're concerned about in terms of drainage as well. So we just want to acknowledge that as part of our presentation and know that we are, we understand that this is not, one that's not going to be without some concern on a lot of different facets. So with that in mind, the biggest, the biggest change from the last time we presented to you all, and as Margaret had mentioned that before, if you look at the, the units that are orange in this, those are the, what we call the townhome units. And before, they were internally oriented, so they were facing each other, and there was basically a driveway alley between each of the residents. We changed that. We made those rear-loaded, and then we fronted Haynes Haven Lane so that that has a much more residential character than it had before. And so with that, if you look in front of that, the landscaping right now, there is a berm there, but that berm is, it's a little spotty in terms of its mature trees. It has some height, but we will be going into that berm as far as this construction. So we know that we're going to be re-landscaping that area, so that's once you're past that secondary entrance where those orange buildings are. That's going to have a little bit more of a residential character landscape, so we want you to be aware of that. The trees that Margaret had mentioned are twofold. The ones that flank that secondary access point off Haynes Haven Lane, there's a cluster of magnolias there. We moved our buildings away from those to make sure those are preserved, and then there's been a lot of attention to the main drive in Adams Place, making sure the majority of those mature trees are saved, so the entrance character stays the same. And then from the, from the get-go, Mr. Blomley asked that if there's any way along Memorial that the existing trees that are there would stay intact. We feel confident that that tree line can stay intact. So we're trying to minimize the amount of change that will happen with the berming that are before the secondary entrance on Haynes Haven Lane and along Memorial as well as along the main entrance. So those are all high priorities for us to make sure that those stayed intact. And then once you get past that secondary entrance, we want to make sure that it's lushly landscaped, but it's not designed to be a buffer. It's designed to be more of a foreground. It's designed to be more of a foreground element to the residentially-designed homes on the back. So I want to make sure you understand that. A major concern of the neighborhood and from the planning staff was we were asking for a reduction in the front setback along Haynes Haven Lane. We were asking for a twenty-foot reduction. After our last meeting, we were able to say, let's see if we can go back to what is right now currently, the front setback, which is forty feet along Haynes Haven Lane. So we were able to move that front setback back. We were able to move our buildings back. It required us to change some of the geometry as far as that overall layout, where the circle is with the orange buildings, but we were able to compensate for that. And it, we, we ultimately had to make the dog park area smaller. That's really kind of where we squeezed it down. That was where some of that footage kind of happened. And we brought the units a little bit closer together, the actual buildings themselves. One of the things that we've been excited about, and we feel like, once it's in place, the, the living community there will be excited about this. But that lighter yellow building, kind of mustard-colored building, that's an amenity center. The Adams Place team is thrilled to be able to offer this to their, you know, to their, their population. This, this is something they really don't have right now. And it could be for art classes and for gatherings and for teaching classes. It could be open-air and have a sunny place for them to be. Right now, that is a void green space. It's, it's green space, but there's nothing going on there right now. We feel like by attaching it to kind of the pool component, which is that brown appendage that goes out adjacent to the amenity center, that could be a really, really valuable part of Adams Place's campus once this gets completed. So we just wanted you to be aware that although we feel like it will be a great benefit to the community, they have not yet embraced that. Right now, they see it as a little bit of a threat because that means there's things that they're not used to happening there, and potentially, there's people coming in that maybe are not part of their campus. So we just want you to realize, we think long-term, it's a great benefit. Short-term, there's concern. So just laying it on the table so you all know what to prepare for as the public hearing happens. So we are, as Margaret Ann mentioned, we have the three, the three red units, those are the apartment style. The kind of browner units, those are the townhomes. The yellow buildings, the amenity center. The primary changes were removing the buildings back and reorienting those townhomes. And with that in mind, Keaton can come up and kind of walk you through the architectural changes that have occurred. But do you have any questions about the overall site plan?
So I think this question was asked and answered last time. So we're going, we're not asking for, well, we're going to a forty-foot setback on Haynes Haven. Those lots now, if my memory serves me correctly, were closer to a hundred feet? Is that correct?
Overall depth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we're encroaching on what was originally approved by sixty feet, in essence.
Well, the front setback would have been still, I believe the front setback would have been forty, it's RS fifteen. But the, the lot depth, we're, we're into that. We're definitely in that RS fifteen area where our, where our town, where the apartments are, as well as the townhomes.
I, I guess what I mean by that is what was originally approved was the fact that there wouldn't be anything encroaching into those five lots that were on Haynes, whatever the number of lots were on Haynes Haven. Okay?
Yeah, I think the perception from the community is that they were to be undeveloped.
Yeah.
And that's not correct. They were, they were to be developed as single-family RS fifteen homes.
I'm with you.
That would be comparable to Haynes Haven Lane.
Okay.
And I have a, I have a...
That's a good point to make, honestly.
I have an exhibit here, Ken, that I, I'd like to share with you all. The staff hasn't seen this yet, so I don't want to make any surprises, but I think it could be beneficial for you all to see this. We projected what the, what the original plan would look like. People have asked that, they've asked for perspectives. But I think by showing you this site plan, it may help you understand a little bit more. Can I share this with you?
Sure.
Okay. We didn't include it in the pattern book because it's, it's highly speculative in terms of, you know, it's not, it's what we believe would have happened if it built out the way that it was originally planned. So if you could just kind of see that. So what we've been wrestling against is kind of the unknown with a lot of the folks that are adjacent to this property. Because their perception is, is that if we went to the original plan, the RS fifteen lots would not be developed, and that green space that they've become so familiar with would stay intact. If we, if we followed the, the original plan, if you see those two red bulk buildings, that's really the bulk of the new units that would be part of the independent living. They would be attached to the structure. Because of the depth of those RS fifteen lots, the driveway would come up very close. You can see how closely it would be to the back of those units. The green space that's currently there would be behind those RS fifteen lots, and that would be consumed by parking. So the campus would become much more urban in terms of its, its character. And that, again, that's not a part of our pattern book, that is a speculative exhibit, but we wanted to project it out so there, so there's a reality to what we're running into. The reality is that the plan we're proposing will have a significantly more green space as well as much more usable green space with a new development. By pulling those independent living homes away from the main body, it allows us to let this campus breathe. It allows us to have some separation. And part of the philosophy behind these, these particular new buildings and new homes is that it will attract a little bit younger demographic onto the campus and give them more opportunity to have a place to live at Adams Place and age-in-place as a result to be able to live here. So there's been a lot of opposition to pulling the campus apart, pulling these units out. But we feel like it's a far superior plan than what was originally planned for the master plan. I've been around a lot of high-rise senior living kind of facilities, and really, you see a building, and you see a whole lot of parking. And I think that would be the direction we're heading in. And from a curb appeal standpoint, you know, you're looking, you're no longer have any sense of that campus. If Haynes Haven developed the way the master plan had it originally, you would just see houses that have backyards to look out on Adams Place. It would have nowhere near the aesthetic character that it's going to have now, especially with, with preserving the buffering and enhancing those townhome units as you move down Haynes Haven Lane. So I don't, again, I don't want to surprise anybody with that, that was generated today. I just felt like it'd be something you may need in your arsenal because it's really one of those things, they're not thinking about the future if it was actually built out. They're considering it never being built. And so it stays green, and it looks great, but that's really not the reality that we're running into and that we're proposing. So do you have any questions about that?
So you're saying this is what it could be today, based on the plan that's there?
That is that the RS fifteen lots are developed as our, as single-family homes. If the, the units that are in, you know, that we are approved for are built into four, four-story towers, they would be anchored on the edge of the existing facility, which pushes, you can see the crunch for it. I mean, when you put those on there, the access drive that goes around the building is really tight because it's basically hugging the backside of those RS fifteen lots.
And you're saying that because it's not practical to go above the existing building?
I'm saying, I think it's a far, I think we're having a much more aesthetic solution with what we're proposing. The neighbors tend to tell us that it's not. And I, I want you all to know that, you may say, that looks better. You may say, hey, we really like this. I just wanted you to see it so you could see that...
It depends on your, where you're, if you're on Haynes Haven, and you lived in that community, this would. But if you're in the, in the senior living space, this would be horrible.
I'm not, I, I candidly, I think they would pitch a fit if we took that buffer out to put in single-family houses along that, that front access point.
That's what I'm saying. It depends on your perspective. If you're on Haynes Haven and you're in that community, you're just continuing with the same single family.
What Clyde's saying is directly behind those RS fifteen houses, you'd have a four-story building.
Well, I agree.
Twenty foot off that house.
You'd have a hard time selling those.
Yeah, it would be rough.
I, I think it's, I think it would be really, I think there's a lot of negatives to it. But I, I wanted to, again, I wanted you to have a picture so you guys had a little, because again, it's going to be a, we're expecting it to be an active meeting, if not challenging. So it would be nice for you all to know that, hey, that, you know, you may not really know what you're asking for. In some situations, a lot of times, the community doesn't really understand the implications. But this is, this is pretty real.
Meaning, this can be built without any further approvals needed?
Correct.
Well, the, those, we'd have to research whether or not these are actual platted lots. I mean, they're, they're platted lots forty or fifty years ago, but it appears that at some point, those lots were incorporated into the Adams Place property. So, you know, I, I think that this is something, as Clyde mentioned, that he didn't consult with us before he brought this up. And, you know, I, I believe that the P, the current PUD makes provisions for that driveway onto Haynes Haven Lane. And so obviously, that driveway, if you have five single-family residential lots, that doesn't take into account the, the existing driveway onto Haynes Haven Lane. So...
Like I said, it's highly speculative, but we wanted to give you a little bit of a tool to understand how it could potentially, how it could, we're just, we're, everywhere we run into, in the neighborhood meetings, we're just running into people, again, they, you know, they want to be a park, never be touched.
And, and, and part of the, part of the circular drive near where their amenity center is dips into the, dips into that RS fifteen area.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't know that, that it's something that we've really studied, what he's talking to you about right now.
Point is, you're going to extra trouble.
What's that?
Point is, you're going to extra trouble and extra approvals to make it nicer for everyone.
We believe that.
Yeah.
I, I think one of the biggest things that this shows is just the, the two buildings, seeing how they were going to attach or were proposed to potentially attach to the existing building, and the number of additional units that could potentially be in each of those two buildings is substantially more true than what you're proposing.
It's more, and it requires more parking. So that's the problem, is it's displacing some pretty critical area that now that parking has to really go out to the main, what they call the kind of pasture area, that little front lawn area. There's really no other place to put the parking, and it kills the amenity center. There's no longer any fluidity between the pool area, the amenity center. So it just puts us in a spot where we think it's a bigger loss as a result.
Can I ask, just on the four attached townhomes, as you're referring to them, are, is that two units per building?
It is.
So eight units total? Some of them are one-bedroom, some of them are two? No, some of them are one-story, some of them are two-story?
That's correct. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, we are more than willing to make sure that the one-story is on that further western unit because there is a house adjacent to that. So we just didn't have that drawn. Our elevations don't show that. But that's, that's, we would be more than willing to do that whenever construction documents come about.
And, and so did it work out that each of those eight units has a garage or not?
Yes, they do.
They do. Some of them are one-car garages, and some of them are two-car garages?
They're all one-car.
They're all one-car garages?
They are, it's a loaded driveway, Chairman Jones, so that you could park a car behind it, but it's, it's a one-car garage.
And then the existing covered parking, how many spaces about?
Are you talking on the whole campus?
No, what's being proposed in this putt?
The four, I mean, the, the three brown buildings?
Correct.
They're, they're existing.
Existing covered parking spaces.
Are they used today? Are they used today? Yes.
Not fully, but they are used.
They're, they're all assigned currently? And do you, are you thinking you would be reassigning or reallocating some of those? I'm trying to get to the parking page on here somewhere. I saw it.
We haven't, we have some, Chairman Jones, it shows kind of where we, we think we'll be kind of utilizing some existing and some proposed. Yeah, so that on, it's not a page number, where it says parking, it kind of walks you through the existing parkings kind of with a green element around it, with a green square, the red parkings with a, a red rectangle around it, and then the blue is, is new parking areas and garages. So there, we're overparked on the campus as a whole, and we're kind of, basically, some closer proximity parking would be allocated towards the new construction area. So that's what this is representing, some proximity parking to the amenity center, proximity parking to the new apartments. And then the garages are shown as well.
And I take it you feel like the residents, you're, you've got to present a plan that will be successful, that you're thinking, for example, the green spaces on here, those are potentially parking spaces that the people in the new three-story buildings are going to need to park in.
Right.
And, and you think that, that works?
We do, we, we do. We, again, because we're overparked on the campus as a whole, there'll be a little bit of redistribution, but we wanted to make sure we identified parking in close proximity to the new construction.
So the parking that is mentioned in these, the detached townhomes, when it says two spaces, it's, it's talking about that, back to your point, that's one space per townhome, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Two garage spaces, two outside, that's a one-car garage for the low...
Right. So I don't know if this is a fair question or not, but I'm going to ask it. So are the, are these, I can't remember if this came up the last time we talked. You know, I, I get the whole marketing piece of this, it makes all the sense in the world, but are they actually age-restricted? What, what, what's the caveat there? Or can it be?
I'm Andy Clark. I'm the Assistant VP of Development for NHC. As the nature of a CCRC, it is a fifty-five-plus community. It is age-restricted.
Okay. And when you say CR, what is that?
CCRC, Continuing Care Retirement Center.
Okay.
So all scopes, independent living, assisted living, skilled nursing, memory care.
Okay. So that's something you can enforce, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do enforce.
Okay. Has that point been made to all these people that are against this?
They know. They, yes, and the point has been made, and it's fifty-five-plus, and their concern is over the fifty-five-year-olds coming in and taking over and changing their lifestyle, when in fact, the current independent living average age is eighty-eight. And this active senior living, the target, will end up being seventy-five to eighty-one. But there will not be children living there, it will be couples and singles.
Okay. Any other questions before we see the amenity changes they're proposing? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Keaton Pettit with Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects. And we've had the privilege of working on the Adams Place campus since its inception. And one of the major items of feedback we've received through all of our meetings is to really try to, to make this campus as cohesive as possible and really respect the existing architectural character. One thing that's unique about Adams Place is while, while there's a very cohesive architectural language on the campus, each, each type of living on campus does have its own architectural language. So the independent living building is the most, most formal building on campus. It's got some unique elements that none of the other built structures do. And then the skilled nursing has its own language, and assisted living has its own language. But I think the thing that ties them all together is a consistency of quality materials and, and quality details. So with that, we, we have felt from the beginning that since this is a new brand of living on the Adams Place campus, that it should be distinct. But we, we've, we've heard a lot of feedback, and we've felt that making it very cohesive is also important. So we've tried, with all the elements on this too, to be more respectful of the campus and also the Haynes Haven neighborhood. And the first thing I'd like to walk you through are the changes to the single-family attached units, which we've kind of coined the townhomes. We've completely redesigned these buildings as part of our efforts to, to get these out of that forty-foot setback for the RS fifteen properties. And we've, we've forward-faced all of these buildings with front doors and front porches all facing Haynes Haven. And then we've put all of the garages and driveways for these buildings on the rear internally to the campus. And then we've, we've tried to pull some of the classic details... And then, we've tried to pull some of the classic details from the existing campus and the materials from the existing campus, namely, the roofing, the shingle roofing. We're going to use the same exact roofing, same exact red brick that's already on campus, and same stone details over our windows. And as we get into the, to the three-story apartment-style units, we're going to continue a lot of the classic architecture found on the independent living building. Specifically, we've added coin details on the ground floor at the corners of the building, consistent with the existing independent living building. We've revised the entry canopies to each of these buildings to have a flat roof, some classic cornice details, and a painted wood look trim column cover, so it's more consistent with each of the entry canopies throughout the campus. We've kept.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? So, which one of these, I'm assuming, it says rear elevation, but what elevation is facing Haynes Haven?
So, the one noted as rear elevation would be facing Haynes Haven.
Okay, thank you.
And what we've done is we've tried to mirror the large entry element that's shown on the entry elevation, so that this, what we're calling a rear elevation, even though it's facing Haynes Haven, it's facing Memorial, it's facing the entry drive, but it still has that front-of-building character. We've softened some of the roof lines since our last rendition to be more consistent with the existing campus, we've lowered the slope on those, and we've added some more arch details specifically over the balconies on those rear elevations to be consistent with the arch details over the balconies on the existing independent living building. And, let's see. And on the amenity center, we really haven't, we had originally designed that to be a bit more consistent, because it's going to be the closest building to the existing independent living building, so we had already designed that with that in mind, same materials, same stone banding, just some updated but classic architectural language. And so, we really haven't changed that since we last came before you. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is a minor question.
Sure.
On the three-story buildings?
Yes.
And you mentioned the corners, the additional detail you added on the first floor. Is that on the existing buildings at Adams Place, is that the way it is? Is it just on the first floor?
Yes, it is, just on the first floor.
Just looks different looking at it on this piece of paper.
Yeah, it's hard when it's flattened out.
It goes all the way up, but I'm sure I never noticed it at the existing buildings, so I'm sure it must be fine.
I'll make the comment that, back to the, we're calling them townhomes, or whatever we're calling them. I really like the fact that you've made the changes, because it's a lot closer to looking like a single-family dwelling. And as part of this whole, you know, back to this deal that was given to us, but the fact of the matter is, is if the house was built on Haynes Haven, that this is a similar, more similar outlook. Now, granted, you've got a three-story apartment, but at least you're going towards Memorial versus going into the neighborhoods that that makes, but this view shed, to me, makes it a lot more compatible.
And that was what we wanted to do.
So, who's going to talk about the gate?
I'm the lucky one.
Okay.
So, again, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, we certainly appreciate it. As I know you are all keenly aware, Murfreesboro continues to grow at an extremely high rate. In fact, I saw this week that it is again ranked number three in the country for cities, the growth of a city. That's not just in the state or the county, that is in the country. The need for housing, especially senior housing, which is what we are providing, is, it continues to grow, continues to be strong, even in the uncertain economic times we're currently in. We appreciate all the concerns and feedback and suggestions we've had over the last three months, since the original planning commission meeting hearing. We've listened, we've had several meetings with our Adams Place residents, we've had another neighborhood meeting with Haynes Haven, and as you guys have noted, there are competing differences, competing complaints. So, we're trying to address both of those and come up with a product that we can be proud of, that will sell, that will be occupied, and that will blend in with not only Adams Place, but the Haynes Haven neighborhood. So, all of the suggestions that we've heard, we've listened to and applied, and we feel like it's a better plan, and I think one or two of you have commented that way as well. But there are a couple of related concerns that I would like to specifically address, and that is the gate, and that is traffic. The concern we hear from Haynes Haven residents is they are having difficulty turning left during certain parts of the day. It's dangerous, they have to wait for the light to change and then to flow in, and that's creating a problem for them. So much so that they, some of them, not all, but some of them consistently cut through Adams Place to get to the light at Airport Road to turn left, and that makes perfect sense. Regarding the gate on Haynes Haven, it currently opens when you approach, so it's pressure-sensitive. That is not what the intent was from the original PUD. The intent was that there would be a card reader, and that our independent living residents would use that only, no staff, no other use would be allowed except for a card through that gate by independent living residents. That has not worked, it hasn't worked in a while, for various reasons, and until we had the original PUD brought back to us, I personally was not aware that that was a condition of approval. It obviously is, and we need to address that, and we need to fix it. Our proposal is, now that it's been made aware, and we have the issue with traffic going in and out of Adams Place, onto Haynes Haven, and avoiding the traffic issue, that we will use technology that's been updated since 1998, that will allow us to use card readers, or a key fob, or even just a keypad to punch into. That would be restricted to the current independent living residents, as well as the new active senior living residents. If it's restricted, then it does not benefit Haynes Haven residents. They still have to find a way out to turn left onto Memorial. If we allow it to be public use, then it's going to create some safety issues, some liability issues for us and for our residents. So, we're trying to balance that, we want to honor the original PUD requirement, we also want to honor our residents that are there, in all things that we do, including the safety that we provide them. So, on the one hand, if it is made public, then it changes the dynamic a little bit, and there's some secondary impacts. Who now takes care of that driveway, if it's public access? Who is responsible if there's an accident on that driveway? So, those are the things that we have to consider, and it's not an easy decision to make. We did an informal study, as soon as we realized that we were working outside of the ordinance and the condition, we did a traffic study, and a very informal traffic study, and it showed that at the peak, there could be as many as eight cars an hour that come down Haynes Haven, turn left into Adams Place, work their way around, and turn left onto Memorial. So, that's one every 10, 11, 12 minutes. If they would go straight, they could probably get out in two or three or four minutes, waiting on the light to cycle. So, we don't feel like it's overly used, but we also don't feel like we're contributing an excess amount of traffic onto Haynes Haven. So, that's where we are, we still recommend that it's restricted, and that the use of technology would make it work better, and that's what we propose tonight.
And so, you're thinking either the card or whatever would be for access in, on the exit from within the Adams campus heading out, would just be pressure-sensitive?
It could be both. A true use of that gate, it would be a card reader on both sides, in and out.
Curious, how long did you do that traffic study that said eight to 10 cars?
It was one day.
Okay.
It was during the week, and we did it seven to nine, 11 to one, and four to six.
Okay.
It was not a long-term, full-fledged traffic study.
Was school in session?
School was in session.
What other comments, questions?
I would tend to think that the residents of Adams Place, even if they were going to turn right onto Memorial, would most likely go to the signalized intersection to leave. And even if you're going into Adams Place, if you're coming south to north, you're not going to turn left across Memorial into Haynes Haven to enter into that entrance, most likely. And if you're coming north to south, it would be faster to enter the signalized intersection also. So, I would see this not adding much, if any, traffic to Haynes Haven from the interior of this front.
I mean, if I was a new resident, if this is developed, and/or an existing resident of Adams Place, I wouldn't want that traffic coming through there.
No.
I mean.
The neighborhood traffic.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What opposition is there to having the gate?
Well, I think the Haynes Haven people would like to be able to go through there to catch the light. And I'm not trying to be demeaning, I'm just telling, saying the facts.
And in the neighborhood meeting we had with Haynes Haven, there were just as many that said to restrict it.
Okay.
There were some that said, yeah, it's very convenient, and we'll continue to use it as long as it's open.
Right.
Is there a gate from the Memorial entrance as well?
It is, but it's not an active opening and closing, it's open all the time.
So, someone, if they didn't know that the other side was open, or had been doing it previously, they would only do it once?
Correct.
Figure out you can't get back out.
I'm stuck.
Yeah.
And not many people are going to drive by, see a gate closed, and they don't have access, not many are going to drive up and wait for it to open, or expect it to open.
Right.
I think I'd recommend having the exit be pressure-sensitive, instead of requiring a code to exit the, because it could create unnecessary people turning around, if they did enter through the open gate.
Which would be easier on you all in the long run, not having to keep both sides always working.
It's more convenient for everyone, for sure.
Only place I know of that has the exit coded would be like a storage unit place, to prevent you from leaving.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah. I just think, you know, I think you all have done a lot to, you know, help us in getting to the point where we're more comfortable with what we're looking at, or I should speak for myself. So, I appreciate all the work you all have done on that. I think you've worked hard to try to, you know, hear the concerns of both your own residents, as well as the neighborhood residents. I did attend the neighborhood meeting at the airport last week, and I think it is the, you know, much of the same thing, you know, drainage, traffic, it's what, you know, all neighborhoods are concerned about. And that is the bigger picture, but I think regarding your traffic, your drainage, y'all will take care of, that's just part of, I think, one of the best things about development is that it does a lot of good for drainage. And I just appreciate the work y'all have done, and I feel much more comfortable with what we're looking at today than what we looked at the first time, even though it was still a good effort the first time, I think we've done a lot to improve it, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, I'll add that I think we have a very strong design team, and they've done an excellent job of listening and boiling it down and putting it on paper.
So, I'll make a couple of comments. From a marketing perspective, from a plan perspective of getting folks that are 55 and older, and I'm in that category, I think it's a great concept. Really having to understand to push a lot of, I mean, I get the pushback, but from a concept perspective, I haven't necessarily understood all the pushback, and I'll be quiet on that part. The, I'm, you know, been on the planning commission for several years, and I'm a big believer in what someone already has by right. And so, if you want to just talk units here, you are, you have the right, if independent living is synonymous with apartment units, or whatever we're calling these units, then we're less than what's already been approved, so that's a positive. The negative, without any question, from a Haynes Haven's perspective, is they are losing their green space associated with the lots that were, they were told that weren't going to be developed, or if they were developed, they were going to be developed as RS-15 lots with a house on them.
That's right.
So, that's, that to me is the negative aspect of this. And in essence, it's kind of a numbers game, we're encroaching 60 feet, the best I can see, on the fact that what was told to them was going to happen X number of years ago, when this plan was originally approved. I'm thrilled with the townhome look, I can see where some people would not like the three-story facility facing Haynes Haven Lane, that was not what they envisioned happening, so I get that. I wish, and I'm not a designer or anything like that, that maybe that building could be moved somewhere else, but it doesn't look like that that's the case. I've gotten a lot of comments on this, and a tremendous amount of pushback, but that's, and if people were, if this was a public hearing, you know, that's not what we're here for. We're here to do the best we can for the city of Murfreesboro and look at a plan as it sits, and there's positives and negatives to this, but I think the positives outweigh the negatives. And I would say that in a public hearing, while we're on television, I guess I am.
They're all watching.
Yeah.
I think there's a big, we heard in the public hearing last time, that there's a big distinction of, these are never going to be developed, and these are RS-15 lots, they have houses built on them, that is a major difference. So, with the idea of that, it's a, these townhomes look, like you said, Mr. Halliburton earlier, they look like homes, and they've got the same setback as a single-family home.
Right.
So, that's a positive attribute. I'm looking at an aerial map right now, because of the turn left on Memorial type of thing, and if you go down Haynes Haven, take the very first left, that takes you back to Northfield, you can be on Northfield, turn left on Memorial pretty quickly. And now, that doesn't benefit the first, probably, one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe the first seven houses down Haynes Haven, that may be a little bit out of the way, if they wanted to go, if they didn't want to fight across, just jump across Memorial. But everybody else further back in Haynes Haven. just jump across Memorial. But everybody else further back in Haynes Haven, it's probably just as fast, time-wise, to pop out on Northfield to turn left on Memorial than it would be to go to the ends of Haynes Haven and try to turn left onto Memorial.
And I think, just kind of echo some of what we're talking about, but hopefully for the Adams Place residents, as well as the Haynes Haven residents, to understand that if they were told in 1994, or promised in 1994, or this was going to be RS-15 lots, you know, really, every property that we look at as a planning commission every month is a request from a property owner to rezone a property, that they have the right to request a rezoning on, to a different use or a different zoning. And a lot of times, it was just zoned that five years ago, or 10 years ago. Things, you know, just don't always work out to be exactly what they should have been five, 10, 20, 30 years ago, 50 years ago. So it is just a part of the process. It is the intent, and they don't get to just automatically change it just coming up here. It does take a lot of work on the applicant's part, and it takes a lot of, you know, work and deliberation on our part, and then it's going to go to the council, and they're going to do the same thing all over again. So to make a change to a zoning, it is not an easy process, and not something that any of us take lightly. But being told something's going to be something, you know, one year, doesn't mean that that is then forever, and it can never be changed again, because, as I've said before, then we don't need a planning commission, because we're never going to change anything, and we're going to keep it all just like it is, and whatever you're zoned for is what you're going to be zoned for. Nothing changes, so. And I don't think that would be a good place for us to be. So I think we need to be changing and keeping up, and I think that hopefully is a lot of why Murfreesboro is number three in the country right now, because we're, I hope, trying to thoughtfully grow responsibly. So I just wanted to say that mainly for the residents that might be watching.
I guess for me, I mean, you said that average age was 88 in the community right now. And my empathy is for, for me, change is difficult. For an 88-year-old, change is extremely difficult. So looking at what it could be today, it's just like Ken said, if I look at the change that could happen on that, that's a lot more difficult for me than what it is, what you're proposing. I would ask that you probably spend a little bit more time on what it could be, and work with the planning department to see, kind of, okay, this is more realistic on what it could be, because that shows, here's what we could build today, without a whole lot of red tape going through it, and we don't want to go there. We want to go here. And it's a lot less impactful. If you spend more time on that, and sit down with the residents on that, I think that will help you. And like what Ken said, I mean, making sure you make, making sure that the residents understand, it is 55-plus, that we're not going to have kids, we're not going to have all these other things. It's what it is today. If it was attractive today for a 55-year-old, then they could be in there today. So I look at the lots, what you have today, and what could be, I'd like what you have today, with the townhome concept, but trying to make it look like a house. But I, what I come back to is, being an 88-year-old, and what kind of change is going to be there if we do nothing, and what kind of change is going to be there if we do this. For me, making the right decision is to go with less change on them, and that would be this. That's it.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
And I guess we are ready for a motion for recommendation for city council.
I'll make a motion that we approve the submission, subject to all staff comments.
A second.
The motion in a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all again very much. Appreciate all the hard work. Okay, next we will move on to public hearings and our recommendations to city council. And we have one item tonight. It's a proposed amendment to the sign ordinance pertaining to electronic changeable graphic display signs. The city of Murfreesboro Development Services Division is the applicant. Ms. Stevens, good evening.
Good evening, commission members. I'm Teresa Stevens, the sign administrator for the city of Murfreesboro. Set for public hearing tonight is a proposed sign ordinance amendment that will allow certain type of sign located on a parcel or parcels having both mixed-use zoning and having an approved planned sign overlay. This sign type, as defined by the sign ordinance, is an electronic graphic display. The sign will display static images, graphics, or pictures with or without textual information. These images are most often displayed using LEDs or similar technology, and can be controlled by a computer, placed on a timer, or remotely by an authorized user. Just as a refresher, the planned sign overlay district must meet specific criteria to be eligible as a planned sign overlay, and design books are reviewed by staff, then submitted to planning commission and city council for approval. Planned sign overlays allow for new and innovative signs on large atypical developments, and encourage design and development of signage that is higher quality than customary under the existing sign ordinance. This is in keeping with the approved planned sign overlay district's intent and purpose. And I just wanted to refresh, so you, what that was. I know we have a new member, so you would understand what the planned sign overlay is, because it's both mixed-use and planned sign overlay. With the amendment, the city staff, planning commission, and city council will have an opportunity to review, and have more direct oversight on the placement of these signs. Do you all have any questions?
So are we saying that these LED signs are only applicable in the city in a mixed, well, the items that you just mentioned?
Mixed-use and planned sign overlay, it has to have both.
Okay. But a retailer that's not in, that doesn't meet that, would not be eligible, right?
Not with this amendment. We are working with a sign consultant for revised sign ordinance that will be coming up in the next six months or so, hopefully less than that.
Okay.
It will be up for your review, that most likely will have these types of signs included.
Okay. I have someone very close to me will be very thrilled that that's going to happen.
I bet. Okay, any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. So we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item tonight. So if there is no one, we will close the public hearing. What other questions, comments, concerns do you all have about this proposed amendment? Anything?
No. Make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Stevens. Okay, staff reports and other business, and we have quite a bit on here tonight, I believe, five items. First item is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a detention pond and drainage easement located on property at 141 to 153 Veterans Parkway. Huddleston Steel Engineering on behalf of Mary Butler is the applicant. Mr. Aguilera, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones, and members of the planning commission. I'm grateful that I've been permitted to return to my soapbox today and talk to you all today about these mandatory referrals.
We're grateful that you're here to do that.
Oh, thank you. I could sense that. I'm so grateful to have you all here. So, yeah, the first item under this agenda is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of detention pond and drainage easement. This is by Huddleston Steel Engineering on behalf of Mary Butler. I'm going to scroll to the exhibit that's been prepared, so you guys can visualize this. So included on the exhibit is, again, what we're seeing today and what is being asked of, to consider the portion of the detention pond and drainage easement. This is located, again, on Veterans Parkway. The current use of the property is a self-storage facility. It contains six total structures, four mini storage warehouse buildings, and two office buildings. The site plan, site plan was reviewed and approved back in 2004 to develop the storage facility, as well as the office space. The detention pond and the drainage easement on-site was recorded within the final plat in 1997 with the Food Lion subdivision, Lot 3 final plat. The applicant is requesting to abandon a portion of detention pond and drainage easement, as it was revealed that portions of the building were constructed into the easement. The design engineer, Bill Huddleston of Huddleston Steel Engineering, has provided written confirmation, as you can see here in this correspondence, that the abandonment will not have any negative impact on the drainage system, and that it will still be able to, the site's ability to handle and treat stormwater runoff will not be impacted. The city engineer has also reviewed this request, and she concurs that this abandonment is acceptable, and based on the documentation that's been provided by the engineer. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council, subject to the following conditions. One, if approved by city council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary, for the legal department to prepare legal instruments to formally abandon the portion of the easement in question, and that the legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department. And the second condition, that the applicant will be responsible for recording these instruments, including the payment of the recording fee. I am here for any questions, and as, again, this is the exhibit of what they're discussing for this right here. So I'm available for any questions, should you have any?
I'd just be interested how it's, how it came up now, but all these years.
That was my question.
We have done some research, and Ms. Butler came in, and I think she is in the process of trying to sell this storage facility that she and her husband, Charlie Butler, developed a number of years ago, as well as the next one that's on the agenda. And during a survey of the property, during the sales process, these encroachments were discovered. We went back and looked in the, in the site plan files, and, you know, there was no documentation of permission to construct those in the easement. So it's been quite interesting researching it. And, you know, we're happy for Ms. Butler's sake that there appears to be reason that we can abandon, that there are no good reason not to abandon it.
All right. Very good. Any other questions or comments? We're ready for a motion.
I guess I have a 24,000-foot question. Is there a way to make sure this wouldn't happen again?
On this property?
Well, not necessarily on this property, but let's say 15 years from now, we have another property that comes through, and the building was built in the drainage easement.
I think that, that there's always the chance that we could miss something. I think this, it's, it's an extreme coincidence that both of the projects that she and her husband developed, this same thing happened, which you'll see on the next item on the agenda. But I think that, not to disparage our staff from 20 to 25 years ago, because that would include myself, but, but I think that, I think that we are much more adept, due in large part to the fact that we have a larger staff now, we have, I think that we have more eyes on things like this, and I think that there's a reason why you don't see things like this happen, is because we're, our staff today is really good at, at, at making sure that things like this don't happen.
I think, I agree, and I think that's great. I guess the other flipside question is, what happened if we had one of these come through that the water couldn't be gotten rid of, if we got rid of the drainage easement? What would be the resolution at that point?
That, that is, that is a good question. I may have to look to Mr. Hankins to, to see if there would have to be some kind of agreement between the city and...
Yeah, it would, this is going to be the typical lawyer answer. It depends.
Thanks.
On, on what the, on what the specific facts and circumstances of any case would be. But I would tell you, as, as the lawyer, if, if planning staff or the planning commissioner or city council approved a building permit, or a building footprint that encroached, you know, I think there would be some, some exposure on our part, you know, for, for having allowed that. Now, if they come in, get something approved that's outside the easement, and then they, on their own, go out and build into it, they've, they have potential problems there.
Well, that, I guess that would be my question, to discourage, was this an intentional build into the easement, or was this, we missed it, and it was approved?
So, so in this particular instance, I think it's, it's less obvious that, that it is, that the building was going to be built into the easement. I think in the, in the next item, the site plan, and I pulled the old site plan from 97, or whenever it was, I was not here in 97, I was a sophomore in college. But, but it is clear on the site plan, it does, on that one, it does show the easement, and it shows the building in the easement. And so I looked back in the file. And, and back then, we didn't have the mandatory referral process that we do now. So at this point, a lot of our local engineering community, I mean, they're looking for those existing easements, and they identify those before we even have to identify them for them. And so, but oddly, there was no documentation in the file of, of that building being built in that easement, or permission having been given to have the building built in that easement. But I'd say that, you know, you see a lot of these now on the front end, where, where those easements are identified, and so we, and those easements are, are approved to be abandoned, and then abandoned during the course of the normal development review process. So will, will, will this never happen again? There's no 100% guarantee, but I think, I think it's going to be very, very few and far between now.
So move. Second.
All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just a reminder to everyone, to always have a title search and survey done if you're buying and selling properties.
Absolutely. I second that, too.
So our next item is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a public utility and drainage easement located on property at 2704 and 2744 South Church Street. Huddleston Steel Engineering on behalf of Mary Butler, applicant. Mr. Aguilera, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Again, as Mr. Blomley has said, this is another request of mandatory referral to abandon a portion of a public utility easement and drainage easement from Huddleston Steel Engineering on behalf of Mary Beth. I've pulled up the exhibit again here as well, which again, talks about, you know, what Mr. Blomley described as something that was missed to that review. The current use of the property is a self-storage facility. The property has eight total structures on-site, seven mini storage warehouse buildings, and one office building. The abandonment has been requested by the applicant due to three of the storage buildings along the northern portion of the site, encroaching approximately five feet into the easement. As Mr. Blomley said, we've done research, mainly him. I won't say that I went into the archives. Sometimes that place scares me. There's a lot of spider webs in there. But Mr. Blomley went into the archives and did find the files, so we could conduct this research. And as the site plan did denote that in 1997, the plans for the C and M mini storage does depict the 10-foot public utility and drainage easement on the property. And although the site plan did follow the normal site plan review procedure, you know, as we discussed in the previous item, this one just wasn't abandoned correctly, didn't go through the regular mandatory referral process. So for this request, the applicant is requesting to abandon only the portions of the easement where the buildings are encroaching. The remaining portions of the easement where there is no encroachment over the easement are not proposed to be abandoned, and will continue to remain as a dedicated easement. are not proposed to be abandoned and will continue to remain as a dedicated easement. The planning department requested comments from the utility companies and agencies to see what their view of the request is, and we've attached that memo into the agenda to show you their correspondence. None of the utility agencies or departments had any issues with this abandonment and the request to abandon those portions. The city engineer again has reviewed this request and concurs that this abandonment is acceptable. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council, subject to the following conditions, that if approved, the applicant will be responsible for writing the information necessary for the legal department, legal instruments to formally abandon the portion of the easement in question. Legal instruments will be subject to final review and approval of the legal department. The applicant will also be responsible for recording these instruments, including the recording fee, and that the third one that's also been added in the report, that the mandatory referral application receives a favorable recommendation of approval from the Murfreesboro Water Resources Board. This request will also have to go to them, and that meeting, if I remember correctly, was for December 13th.
Yes, next Tuesday.
Yes, and so they have to go through this process as well and give approval. But we've been in contact with Valerie Smith and Murfreesboro Water Resources to determine if this would be acceptable, and they've also concurd that this... that there would be no issues here. So if you have any questions, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Not moved for approval.
Oh, I do have a question. All right. I guess the water board's gonna clear this up, but what all other properties does that easement serve? And if we get rid of this easement and somebody downstream has an issue with water, do they have a resolution to get water to their property?
You talking about water from a drainage standpoint or water from a... like drinking water standpoint?
Well, both. However, we're using this easement is if they're needing to get water off their property, so upstream to get rid of their property, and then now this easement is abandoned. They no longer have a way to get the water off. And if drinking water-wise, I guess that's irrelevant. But I just want to make sure that the people upstream from this are not gonna be affected at all.
We did a thorough... and sorry to jump in, Mr. Aguilera. We did a thorough... we thoroughly researched the issue, contacted all the utilities, and there are no facilities in the easement, no drainage facilities, no utilities. So it's really not serving anybody right now.
Okay, all right, that's what I need to know.
Yep.
And it looks like from the map, there's still some area where you could run.
Yeah, this is not a total...
Yeah, and that's what they wanted to specify in the application, that you're correct, because they're only gonna be abandoning the portions where it does encroach. There'll still be portions of the easement that will still be active and dedicated for that property.
Yeah, and I would think that we wouldn't be sitting here looking at this yet if there was any question that it was gonna affect somebody else or...
I just wanted to clarify.
Get it on the record. Make sure they know we're paying attention.
Second.
Did we have a motion? Oh, and then we had a comment. Thank you. So we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. Next, we have a mandatory referral to consider the dedication of right-of-way and various easements on the city-owned property at the southwest corner of Burnt Knob Road and Blackman Road, and to also consider the acquisition of off-site sanitary sewer easements and right-of-way in the vicinity of this city-owned property. The City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Good evening, Ms. Kerr. How are you?
Thank you, Chair Jones, members of planning commission. These easements and right-of-way acquisition requests are from the City of Murfreesboro and located on properties along Blackman Road, Veterans Parkway, along Burnt Knob Road, and within the City of Murfreesboro. Property within and along Veterans Parkway, Burnt Knob Road, I-840, and Blackman Road. The sanitary sewer easement acquisitions are to provide services to the Burnt Knob Road Sanitary Sewer Assessment District. The other easements and right-of-ways proposed will be acquired to help facilitate the development of the parcel the city will be transferring to Middle Tennessee Electric, as well as future improvements to the adjacent roadways. These easements will be used for sanitary sewer connection, electric line connection, as well as the construction of a pump station with an access drive. On the exhibit that... is it on the screen? You'll notice that there are two potential locations for the pump station. We are seeking flexibility as to the final location of the pump station. All proposed easements and right-of-ways are depicted on the exhibits in your agenda package. These easements and right-of-way dedications are approximate locations and could possibly shift from their current locations shown on the exhibits. The easements and right-of-ways will include appropriate temporary slope and construction easements, and determined by final review of the construction plans and development of the final easement and right-of-way documents on the construction plans. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve this request, subject to the proposed easement and right-of-way locations being approximate. Final locations will be determined by staff after completion of the construction plans. The proposed easements along and right-of-ways will also include any necessary temporary slope and construction easements as determined by city staff. And the documents dedicating the proposed easements and right-of-ways will be subject to final review and approved by the City of Murfreesboro Legal Department. The planning commission will need to discuss this application and make a recommendation to city council. If approved, the city council, then the mayor will be authorized to sign the necessary documents to dedicate the easements and right-of-way on city property, and city staff would be authorized to acquire right-of-way easements, right-of-way and off-site easements. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Have a new little city going on over here.
There are no questions. So moved.
Second.
And subject to all staff comments.
Subject to all staff comments, absolutely.
You had quite a list there, so yes. Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Next, we have a mandatory referral to consider the dedication of an electric easement located on city-owned property at 3850 Shelbyville Pike. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subject property located at 3850 Shelbyville Pike is the very southern end of the city. It is where the city's emergency communications tower was built about six or seven years ago, across from the Rutherford County Rock Quarry. CUD would like to install what they call a district metered area, and I emailed CUD to see if they could explain that to me. And the way that they explained it to me is a metered zone of CUD's distribution system where CUD can record, monitor, and interpret data and flow rates to help find leaks and make better decisions from a maintenance standpoint. So what they need on city property is an electric easement from MTE. So see, here is the driveway coming in off Shelbyville Pike that leads up to the emergency communications tower. CUD's DMA station would be right here. It would need electric service from the existing power pole that is located here, and in order to do that, MTE would need an electric easement to serve that DMA station. So because it is on city property, a mandatory referral is needed to be considered by the planning commission for the grant of that electric easement to MTE to serve that CUD facility. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I did include... I won't read them because they're basically identical to the two conditions that Mr. Aguilera has read before regarding the final approval of the legal instruments by our legal department and the recording of the documents by MTE and/or CUD. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Are none. I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And our next, and I believe last, item is the mandatory referral to consider the dedication of an electric easement located on city-owned property along Barfield Church Road. City of Murfreesboro applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the exact same purpose for a CUD DMA station. It's on city-owned property that is located at the intersection of Barfield Church Road and Veterans Parkway. It's the area highlighted on the map before you. And this is property that the city acquired a number of years ago with the construction of Veterans Parkway and the construction of the Greenway Trail Extension. The city owns this property, and CUD wishes to install a DMA station on this property. And for that, another electric easement is needed, and here is the exhibit that has been provided to us. Here's the proposed DMA station, and there is an existing power pole here, and there needs to be an easement to get the electric line to serve that DMA station. So we would recommend the exact same conditions of approval that are outlined in the agenda materials that you made the previous item subject to. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and just on the previous item, you know, there was actually a line, dashed line from the electric pole to the station. Does that need to be on this exhibit or... As long as it's all still okay, I just...
Yeah, I think it's fine. It's just the exact location of that easement will be ironed out with the legal description that will be provided to us.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Not a move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And do we... at the end of our items of business, then just the only thing I want to mention is we meet next Wednesday, correct?
That's correct. We're meeting next Wednesday at 2:30 because the city council also has its workshop at 11:30, so we've pushed back our meeting to 2:30 so that Mr. Wright and Ms. Everwatter will be at city meetings all day next week... all day next Wednesday.
Pushing their weight around on this again.
Y'all can still meet at 1:00.
I did also want to mention a couple of things. The end of the year is getting close, so if you have not gotten your continuing education and you need some resources, please let me know. I've tried to email a number of those to y'all, and I noticed that the emails have been rolling into Ms. Jako, letting her know that... of videos that y'all have watched, so we appreciate that. And just remember to get your four hours in, if you haven't done so already, by December 31st. Also, another thing is I emailed last week about the disclosure... the city disclosure form. It's not due until the end of January, but I like to get things done quickly, so if y'all have the opportunity to turn those in at the next planning commission meeting next week, that'd be great. And also, don't forget that the state form should be submitted directly to the state, and you can actually turn that one in, submit that one online. Any questions, let me know, and if I can't answer them, I'll ask Jennifer Brown down in finance.
Anything else? All right, we'll see everyone next week at 2:30, and we stand adjourned.